Good evening. I'd like to call a meeting in the Willett City Council order for January fourteenth. We all rise and ... Larry, can you lead us to the pledge?
Thank you. Please rise. My pledge alleges to the flag of the United States of America and to the public that stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice in the heart of this land. Thank you, you may proceed.
Roll call, please.
Yes. Councilmembers, thank you.
Yes.
Strong.
Here.
Madrigal.
Here.
Orinstein.
Here.
Barrett.
First item is our, in all our meetings, is public communications. Council welcomes participation in meetings. These are items that are not on the agenda, be limited to three minutes for comments. Do we have anybody that wants to speak on items that are not on the agenda this evening? Second, third, and last call. Seeing none, we'll move on to public matters. Our first item is an update of the future of the Willetts Center for the Arts, including a presentation from the interested group of Willetts cultural art members. And I want to say first that I did get my renewal deal in the mail the other day. Thank you for, somebody being proactive about doing that and getting that going. And I see from this letter that some money is coming in as a result of that. So Adrian, did you have an intro to this or do we just turn this over to the people that are working on it?
I'll say a few words first. At the last meeting in December, we, I reported on efforts to establish a nonprofit entity that had been ongoing for the last couple of months that stalled and that we expected the presentation to be forthcoming from a group of members and interested parties in the community about plans that they were trying to develop or to continue the efforts at hand. And so tonight we will hear our presentation. However, I am also recommending tonight that we establish an ad hoc committee to provide an opportunity for a number of different ideas that have been presented to me through various contacts to be vetted with the city council members. And I wanted to note that the Center for the Arts is still a city-owned facility and so we have a responsibility for that facility. And until such time that there's a decision made by the city council that would be in collaboration with the community to enter into an agreement turning over that responsibility, we have, we have an obligation to hear from the community and consider all ideas. And so with that, I would like to invite June Ruckman and I think June is going first and take it from there.
Hi. I'm June Ruckman and first of all, I want to thank you for giving us the time tonight. I'm here to just provide a brief update on the recent volunteer efforts in support of the Willetts Center for the Arts. Over the past, over the last six weeks, volunteers have scheduled and confirmed 11 months of shows for 2015. Each artist or group of artists has been informed that the center is in transition. This has not dampened anybody's enthusiasm. We all love have the shows at the gallery. Our all-volunteer annual craft fair led by Bonnie Belt was held in December and brought in over $4,400. In late December, membership letters were mailed out and in the first two weeks of January, we've received $2,265 in annual dues and we anticipate more memberships throughout the year. I'm a former commissioner and I sort of took care of the accounts when I was a commissioner. And we see dues coming in pretty heavy all the way through April. So I'm sure we'll be getting some more revenues from dues. There are other fundraisers in the planning stage, including an art auction in October, which is everybody looks forward to and we haven't had in a few years. These efforts have brought our operating budget up to $8,810.71 as of yesterday. Yay! Sounds so wonderful, but we normally, when the commission was active, our budget usually ran, you know, a rolling budget of 16,000 to 20,000. So this 8,000 looks good, but we got a lot of work to do. There's also a volunteer group that is actively exploring the possibility of completing the process to become a nonprofit. And I just want to say this is a unique and exciting time for those involved with the Art Center, a time to look forward, not back. I've heard so many interesting and really intriguing ideas how to best run the Art Center and keep it a vital part of our community. I look forward to the community-city partnership and charting a viable and sustainable future for the Art Center. In the interim, please rest assured that the volunteers will keep the gallery doors open and the lights on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to make their comments? Thank you.
I just have a few things. I'm Nancy Nazarian-Reed. I bet I put my glasses on. Good evening, everybody. I want to thank Adrian and Kathy for being so helpful for us and advising me in things that I didn't know about and the city council for inviting us or allowing us to speak tonight. I'm volunteer, volunteer coordinator of WCA, the Willetts Center for the Arts. And I'd like to thank the city of Willetts for providing us with a vintage building to house our wonderful Willetts Center for the Arts. I want to thank all the dedicated men and women and members who took the challenge of building it into a wonderful gallery, classroom, and great room. Now, it's been my privilege to be a member of the Willetts Center for the Arts for many years and I wear this logo and this pin with pride and show it to everybody who knows me. Throughout this time, we've, I've made some wonderful friends, artists, teachers, grant writers, landscape artists, builders, musicians, some neighbors who just like art and support the arts in our community, knowing how important it is to the young, the middle, and the vintage citizens. I've seen the commitment to work together and present quality and diverse exhibits on a monthly basis. Putting on a show requires a lot of planning, cooperation, money, and hard work on the part of many volunteers and they're always there. We provide food, music, and a wonderful evening of art every month that the people of Willetts look forward to. As an artist myself, with many other artists that are here in the room, we've experienced the cooperation, communication, and trust that has grown with each project and the joy of putting on a group show. We all enjoy seeing the people coming through the door, anticipating what they're going to see next. We love seeing the young people attending and hoping to instill in them a love of the arts and that this is their Art Center as well as ours. We've gone through many transitions in the past years, but we've always put on an art show, thanks to our giving volunteers. We look forward to another successful year with the new and old faithful members volunteering their time and their energy. This year fundraising is one of our priorities, as with the January show, Bob Nixon Senior, estate show and fundraiser. Thanks to Betty Nixon who donated the paintings, we can offer them to our people for, at reasonable prices and we've sold quite a few now and we hope to have most of them sold by the end of the month. We hope to make better use of our classroom, have more concerts and events in the great room, and that's all part of the agenda in our fundraising this year. I did mention too, the holiday craft fair has always been a favorite, the hard work of Bonnie Belt, but also Ann and John McGlinty, without them it wouldn't go on. And John and Ann emailing me and letting me know what's the next step. The Twirlers and the African dances and Emmon Dahl, as well as other folks, have found a home at WCA. And we are fortunate also to have many businesses, especially Printing Plus that does our posters, the Willetts News and the Willetts Weekly who come out and interview us, take pictures and put terrific articles in the newspaper, Firefly Framing who has helped us many times and especially this month, and the radio stations that support us too. We're all proud of the Willetts Center for the Arts and I know everyone wants us to do well and carry on. So with all this, I hope to have a super year, 2015. All it takes is for the community, the volunteers, and the city of Willetts to continue working together to promote the arts and to make it happen. And by the way, I have on my calendar two slots for hosting. If anybody can volunteer, it's here. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy.
Beat you, Dale. Hi, I'm Hal Wagonette. I'm the immediate past chair of the Arts Council of Mendocino County. And our current chair, Jan Rodriguez, is here in the audience as well. Jan, Jan, oh pardon me. I have another Jan on another board. Jan.
I changed my name, but I didn't know I changed my last name.
She only changed part of her name. I'll let her introduce herself when the time comes. The Arts Council of Mendocino County has a broader scope of working with the arts organizations throughout the county. We're partnered with the Mendocino County Office of Education and we sometimes act as a receiver for smaller arts organizations such as this one in their startup procedures. I have handed to the city council what is known as a SWOT analysis, S-W-O-T, stands for, what does it stand?
Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats.
Strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. This was done by our executive director about six or eight months ago. It was handed to the current managers. We're not sure if it ever made it to the city manager or to the public. That's why I've distributed it to the board members. But we stand ready to assist with that sort of work. This is perhaps a little more business-like than the artistic and volunteer aspect that we just heard from. But government needs this sort of an exercise to pull from the community what is really possible and fiscally supportable. My own analysis is that the center needs about $2,000 a month in order to survive. And that doesn't mean get ahead really, but to survive, take care of its infrastructure, insurance needs, and so on and so forth. And so I think that the volunteers have a good start with their current $8,000 kitty, but it certainly isn't the whole deal. And that's what this sort of an exercise is about. We think that that should probably be redone and I have handed to the city manager and the attorney four of the consultants that we know in this area that are capable of assisting with such things. So the Arts Council, I think, stands ready to assist. That's the Mendocino County Arts Council, which is a countywide organization. And we, of course, can help you with partnerships with other arts organizations and other entities should you wish. Thank you.
Thank you, Hal.
Artist, hi, my name is Dela Stevens. I'm a local artist, arts educator, arts business owner, member of the Willetts Center for the Arts, and I'm also the president now of the Board of Directors of the Arts Council. And I have here a statement that Alyssa and we are director prepared and she was not able to make it. She had a conflict. She might still come late, but I'd like to read it to you. Thank you. "The Arts Council of Mendocino County highly commands the city for their ongoing support of the Willetts Center for the Arts. The center is a cultural asset for Willetts as well as for the entire county. And like other arts organizations, it's a powerful engine for local economic development. We know from studies of tourists, spending, and travel patterns that participants in cultural activities spend more and stay longer, and the same holds true for local or regional residents who come to town for an arts opening. Cultural participants are more likely to shop on the way to the opening and go to dinner afterwards, benefiting other businesses in the process of participating in the arts. Being a smart city locally means growing the arts economy and supporting cultural tourism as one of our best strategies towards a post-marijuana-dependent economy and healthy youth activities. It is also the duty of community stakeholders to come together at this time to make their voices heard regarding the programs they want to see continue at WCA. So we hope that a widely inclusive strategy planning session to clarify the mission statement, legal structure, and long-term planning is somewhere in the near future for WCA. We would encourage everyone to take part shaping the organization's visions. The Arts Council of Mendocino County can offer fiscal sponsorship, continued management consultation, and we are hoping to partner on a spring fundraiser again, draw to your drop, with the recommendation that a portion of the funds raised be used to hire an outside consultant to guide a professional planning session." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else care to speak this evening?
Yeah, I'd like to. You know, a lot of these things, we've been bouncing around for quite a while, but...
Please, Dale, can you introduce yourself?
Dale Dingman, previous commissioner on the Cultural Arts Commission. It was a all-volunteer organization for many years. The job was done to a great degree by the community in so many ways. And the thing that I feel really strongly about right now is that in an effort to move forward into a nonprofit, there are people who are somewhat skeptical as far as the viability and the rationale of doing something like that and having a separation from the city, so to speak. But I know that when I see a room full of people like this and how long they've been supporting this organization for over 20 years, I have confidence that the basic needs of the center can be raised by the community and supplemented with becoming a nonprofit, enabling us to pursue things that we've never been able to pursue as being part of the city. So we currently have done a little structuring with some people to have a little core group. We're kind of trying to emulate what we had before as far as people having specific tasks like the commissioners did before, where Brendan Orinstein has decided to help us out with our financials and we have other people that help out with different areas of responsibility prior to us having any more conversations possibly with the ad hoc committee. But we're looking forward to this relationship with the city. It's really important that the community is totally aware of what's going on because we know that's where the support comes from. And to liaison with the city at this time to move it forward to something that is really sustainable, as we've mentioned before, is the most important thing we're trying to do. So it's all about the people and the community, as simple as I can say. A few phone calls and you fill up a room.
It's great to see that turn out this evening. Thank you, Dale.
Thanks for your time. I think there's a couple others.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Raby, here from far off Potter Valley. Wanted to bring a voice from the rest of the county as an artist and as a fundraiser and event planner, that this indeed is a really strong cultural institution with a lot of respect from other places, that would like to see, I mean, I admire that there's not only just the fine arts coming, just as arts, but when you have like your parades and you're bringing in the stuff about the farming culture and things like that, it's a wonderful place, the Art Center. And I'm planning, I do the fundraiser, the draw to your drop for the Arts Council and one of the other organizations within the county. As a recipient, every year we did it at Willetts Center for the Arts a couple of years back and brought in a few grand for the Arts Council and for Willetts Center for the Arts and would love to do it again this spring because it's such a great place with a huge community of artists that's always ready to go with it. And just wanted to say that the rest of us in the county are really hoping to see this place continue and thrive as well.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Are you thinking of doing the draw to your drop here at the Art Center?
Thinking, honey, I've been planning it and talking to all these people. Yes, we're hoping, the date hasn't been set yet, but we're hoping the last weekend in April.
How many hours did we go in the last one?
The last one here, I think it went 25 hours. Last year we went 27 hours. I'm hoping that somebody's ready to go more than 36 and beat mine. Come on, people, you can do it. Get those hourly sponsors. The place is great. It'll raise a lot of money for this wonderful organization.
Thank you.
Well, I just want to say, I'm Ann McGlinty, former commissioner, and I'd just like to say I'm so glad that Janet and Hal came because I really believe a lot in the Arts Council and it's really wonderful that they're really supporting us and we're going to work together. So one of the things I was thinking of is that the rentals of the great hall haven't been quite as prevalent as we would like. And so we really need to let the community know what a great center it is and great acoustics, really, really a nice place to rent. And Kathy has so graciously agreed to help us with our rentals. I know it's going to make a huge difference. And so one of, with the volunteer committee, we are going to look and see, it's a very competitive market in Willetts. We've got the Grange, we've got the Community Center, and we need to make sure that the Art Center is also in line with what the rentals are. And so we're going to take a look at that and we're going to really let the community know what a wonderful place it is and we look forward to a lot of great events happening at the Willetts Center for the Arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
I will say we do have a few rental...
Hey, my name is Maricela De Santana. And I'm a teacher at the high school. And I just wanted to make sure that the Art Under 20 was brought up because I feel like Kathleen was here, she would be talking about it, our art teacher. But it's a huge event. It happens every year and it has happened, I want to say, for 15 years. It's a huge community event. Sometimes we have, it's so packed that people are out into the street and our band participates. There's dancing, there's the art, there's not just our art, but there's the Charger School art too, and it's a great venue. I can't imagine another place to do that in and I would hate to see that not happen. It's just really big. We work up to it the whole year. So I wanted to make sure that that was stated in there. I've been to some great events at the Art Center. Memorials are something that stand out in my mind. It's a great space for memorials and I've been really impressed with the acoustics and with how easy it is to set up and take down there. It's really nice. That's true.
So you said Kathleen, is Kathleen Kirkpatrick still doing art?
No, Carolyn. Carolyn Bakewell. She's the teacher. Yeah, she's the art teacher.
Thank you.
She was mentor.
I didn't...
Kathy teaches at the college.
She teaches at the college.
No, okay.
She's taking the joint classes.
Yes, right. She teaches at night.
All right.
She used to teach at the high school.
And she teaches the night classes.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Jeffrey Cook and I'm representing Willetts Frontier Days here tonight. And a little different perspective, as being a volunteer organization of 89 years this year, we want, and we've worked with the Center for the Arts many times and we have a great relationship. And so I want to remind them of, in the turmoil of having a volunteer organization for so many years, we've gone through a lot of changes. And right in the beginning, the fire department took over the rodeo and then it was tough where the city came in, we sold it back to the city in a partnership, and it's been a great thing. It's been a great thing for the city and the community, a lot of inspiration in that. So I mention that just so not to get disheartened when things get a little rough every now and then, especially early on when people are trying to define everything with it. So we really hope to see it going good. And we want to also remind everybody that Willetts Frontier Days, there's never been anybody paid anything in management and it's totally volunteer. And part of that is so special because it shows the inspiration of your group. And it gets down into core groups of people, but that, when you keep that alive, that's what created it and that's what sustained it. There may be people who are better managers and have some other ideas who come and go, but it's that lasting idea that's going to keep it going. And we're proud of that and we hope to see that Willetts Center for the Arts continue going the way it was. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Good thoughts. Anybody else this evening?
Thank you.
My name is David Stephan and I live in Wallala. And I just made a short trip up here tonight.
You made that trip a few times myself.
You have, good. I work in Philo and some of you I've met, Ann I've met, and Dale was the first person to introduce me to the Willetts Center for the Arts when I began working for KZYX. And I can only tell you that the Art Center, when I first walked through the doors with Dale, I was sort of gaga because I was finding myself in disbelief that a place this wonderful was here at the, at one of the edges of the county, if you will. I realize we're sort of in the center, but, but I understand that. I said that. But when you're driving 100 miles from Wallala, you sort of get the idea you're at the edge of the world. And it's such a wonderful facility. And I know that for a few years after I met Dale, there was a lot of activity and we at the radio station wanted to participate and partner as often as we could because it's such a dynamic facility and it really, like a sports team does, it brings the attention of the city of Willetts to everybody else in the county. So I think it's a jewel up here and I hope that whatever the outcome is, if this is a 501(c)(3) or if some other organization is formed, the fact is this is a vital asset and I hope that you continue to support it in whatever form it takes. But I wanted to tell you that you're appreciated well beyond the borders of the city of Willetts.
Thanks for your trip. Anybody else? Well, thank you for, everybody for their comments. I, you know, the city is very proud of its Art Center as well and we're very proud of the volunteers and the people that have put the 20 years into it because I go back to before it was started and Hugh Wiley and a bunch of people that put in a tremendous amount of effort to restore that building. It did not always look like it looks today. And, you know, and as Jeff mentioned, volunteer groups, I've been in a bunch myself and they have a little cycle to them at times and it's always, it's great to see when it re-energizes itself and it feels like tonight there's a group here that's ready to re-energize it under the kind of the principles that the city would like to see. So I think in order, you know, one of the few, if hardly any, extra authorities the mayor has in this job up here is that they can, they can create ad hoc committees and I have found that they're a special purpose committee to try and accomplish one task and they're not a standing organization that goes forever. But I think in this transition time to have a couple of council people involved in this to help, actually help our fairly small staff that we have to work on this, that I would go ahead and establish an ad hoc committee. So there'll be a couple other people at the council level that will be helping figure out what the best path forward to keep this energy going forward is. And I was really heartened to see, you know, you don't often, I guess get real happy to see bills come in the mail, you know, and it seemed to happen. But I was really, really was happy to see somebody had the initiative to do that here last month or whatever and just step out and say, hey, you know, and I don't even remember if I ever was a member. I have no idea. You know, I mean, you get a deal and you support, something you support, you know. But anyway, so I think we will do that and whether we re-establish the Cultural Arts Commission and work under that umbrella for a while, you know, and we certainly had some issues in the last 12 months in keeping a quorum, or the last 24 months in keeping a quorum in that group. And it seemed to be a burden to the staff to keep that thing, to get enough people to show up to be able to conduct business. So it's going to be really imperative that people stay involved and I think having events planned and having, you know, stuff on the docket will go a long ways to do that. And so, you know, I'll take, I'll take a measure of the council here at another time and take some input from each of these and see who would be interested in doing that and providing that contribution to it from up here. But don't look for any, don't ever think that the city isn't supportive and hasn't always been supportive of a viable Art Center. We've invested a lot in that building ourselves through the time, you know, not to discount the volunteer efforts that did the physical work on it. Did anybody else have any comments up here on this? It's not particularly an action item for us this evening because there was no attempt to do anything negative, but it, so, but if anybody up here has additional comments, it'd be appropriate.
Yeah, I just want to affirm to everyone my commitment to the Art Center and I think that I'm not unusual in this group. I think we're all very supportive of that organization in whatever form it takes. As a city councilwoman, it's our responsibility to make sure that whatever happens there is a sustainable enterprise going forward. And so I'm open to, you know, whatever we as a community decide is the best way for it to go forward. I think there's an incredible opportunity there. It's a wonderful space and I think all of us have been to not only great shows. The show that comes to mind, the one that was around Frontier Days a few years ago with the saddles and the leather work, I mean, I thought that was such, it was such a great synergy between, you know, two existing organizations and I live within walking distance of the center, so I tend to go to a lot of the openings. But I just want to assure you all that I'm... The, the show that comes to mind, the one that was around Frontier Days a few years ago with the saddles and the leather work, I mean, I thought that was such, it was such a great synergy between, you know, two existing organizations. And, and I live within walking distance of the Center, so I, I tend to go to a lot of the openings. But I just want to assure you all that I'm completely committed with this organization moving forward. And I support the creation of an ad hoc because I think we need to get a couple of options out on the table. Around the community, I've heard scuttlebutt of different ideas, and oh, you could do it this way, or you could do it that. And so I think it's really important for us to explore those and see what the, the benefits are to the different ways of doing things. Because this is really, commercial has really become our cultural hub in the city of Willets between the Chamber and the College and Frontier Days. I mean, this, this is it. This is one of the jewels in our crown. But as many of you know, our city staff does not have the capacity to really explore all these opportunities in the ways that I think that, that they should and give it, you know, all the attention that, that it needs. So I certainly look forward to the creation of an ad hoc to, you know, flush those ideas out and look forward to hearing back on, on what that group thinks is the best way to move forward.
Thank you. Anybody else up here? Okay. Well, great. I've done a number of events, you know, I like to do a little bluegrass event there once or twice a year, so do some more of those. So anyway, we will, I'll pursue that. I'd rather than just pick people out, I'd like to take the temperature of people up here and get people that are, could be most helpful. But anyway, thank you all for showing up, and it is, I really think, you know, I give a lot of credit to Frontier Days, I think, and I've mentioned this a number of times before, the, the, what they've been able to, to do over ninety years of volunteer organization in this community is a model that, that cannot be refuted. So, thank you. Feel free to, the rest of the meeting may not be quite as exciting. It won't take a person.
Thank you so much.
Give it just a second here. Thank you. Maybe usher people out the front door so we can hear. So our next item of business this evening is an update on the city's emergency water supply project. Is that Rod, do you have a couple words on that for us?
Yeah, real quick update.
Thank you.
The public works crew working with the engineering department will have the, the underfloor, underfloor plumbing completed tomorrow. So all the pipes and all the conduit, the electrical and controls. And our little containment area for our chemical tanks will be done tomorrow. We're going to start, weather permitting, we'll probably start digging footings on Friday and start forming the foundation, forming it up next Tuesday, since Monday's a holiday. Last I checked, we have our 404 permit from the Army Corps, waiting on our 401 permit from Regional Water Quality Control Board for the replacement well. And that's probably not going to happen for some time unless it's really dry again and we can get out there and do the work. The building, the metal building for the groundwater treatment plant is going to be here January twenty-seventh. So it won't go up until we have the foundation poured and it gets secured for three weeks. So it won't take very long. It's just a box, form it up and pour it. But if it's dry, we could have it done next week, so.
Good, thank you. You have?
I was just wondering if we've been able to save some money on the building? Is it cheaper than what we had originally budgeted?
It's cheaper than all the cost we were getting for the different types of buildings. The cost for the building itself is forty-four thousand five hundred, and we're saving a substantial amount of money doing the work ourselves. May take a day or two longer, but obviously it's a lot, lot less expensive, so.
I appreciate.
It's been a coordinated effort.
You're doing it that way.
Yeah, me too.
Okay. I think we're good. Thanks.
Thank you.
Moving to the consent calendar, we're pulling the minutes of December tenth, but we have three items on the consent calendar. I'd look for a motion to approve.
I still have.
We have a motion. Do we have seconds?
Seconds.
Do we have a public comment on the consent calendar? Anybody? Do we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Shasky?
Yes.
Stone?
Yes.
Madigal?
Yes.
Hornstein?
Yes.
So there's a number of informational reports that you're welcome to read at your leisure.
I have just one, one comment on one of them, if I can. On the, the building safety, construction activity, I think there might have been a mistake on the first item, the twenty-three-hundred-eleven square foot, single-family dwelling. I believe the address is incorrect. It was moved. I don't know if they changed the permit, or if this is a typo. But I believe it should be one seventy, not one sixty.
The first item there?
Hill three court.
Good catch.
I stare at it every day up at my desk.
So move on to rights to appeal. Persons who are dissatisfied with decisions, the city council may have a right to review of that decision by a court. The city has adopted ten ninety-four point six Dakota Civil Procedure, which generally lives to ninety days. The time within decisions of city boards and agencies may be judicially challenged. We're going to move along to city manager reports and update regarding the Reach Care Medical Service operations. Adrian and Jim probably have some information on this for us. And we have this handout, which we read.
So we will start with the press release that Reach issued yesterday announcing it's that they've gone live with temporary operations out of the Ukiah Airport. And this is a result of challenges that they had experienced here with the same proposed endeavor for temporary operations. And I spoke with Anna Blair, who actually issued the press release this afternoon. We've been trying to connect since yesterday. I did have a heads up about this a couple days in advance. They are still very, very committed. I mean, she just, she assured me a hundred percent committed to being at the Willets Airport permanently, long-term. But they, they were anxious to get operations going in the county, and that's what led them to start up at Ukiah Airport. So there's great interest, of course, in the initial study that's being completed by Meaden Hunt. And we are hoping to have that in the next week or two. And that will inform, you know, some decision-making at that point. That, just as a reminder, that is going to be subject to a thirty-day public review and comment period, not only, you know, with just individuals in the community, but various regulatory agencies as well. And then I think Jim may have some further updates.
Just that I spoke with Reach's attorney this afternoon and inquired about this concept of a sublease agreement at the Willets Airport to commence temporary operations. And I was advised that he had been in some negotiations with the Keep the Code about doing that, and those really stalled and didn't go anywhere. And the suggestion was that Reach would have limited operations, no nighttime flights, and really a scaled back temporary operation while SEQA analysis and mitigation efforts are going forward. But that they would not, would not agree. He was seeking to get an agreement from them that they would, they would consent to that type of operation. So basically, he advised that he could not recommend that his client proceed on a sublease basis at this time.
Well, yeah, I, I have a little different take on that. I, I, not what they're going to do, they're going to, they're going to do what they seem determined is most prudent in their interests, and I, and I support them in that. I, you know, upon giving this more consideration and talking to some other members of the community, I've come up with what I, what I think is, I've been a little bit, I've been a little bit concerned, I mean, I understand the SEQA process, I think. I understand that SEQA is, you know, is a protocol that has to be adhered to relative to a development project at the airport. I don't think that personally, my take on that, landing helicopters or airplanes at the airport does not constitute a development project. Building a structure there, supplying it with utilities, you know, native plant assessment, wildlife assessment, whatever, those things are appropriate to SEQA and are appropriate to a project. I don't see that, you know, relative to flying aircraft in and out of the airport, that can't be a SEQA project. Or every airplane that lands there would have to file, do a SEQA review. So, you know, I don't see the, a sublease agreement being, triggering any kind of a SEQA impact. And, and I think that, you know, we've been hung up on this idea of liability, of threatening to be sued, and who's going to, you know, we want the, we want the applicant to indemnify the city. Well, I can understand the applicant indemnifying the city on what I just described as the project of, of putting a structure there and, and that part of it. I don't see that it's a project if they sublease from an existing, on existing property with existing improvements, and then they're just flying in and out. And, and if somebody wants to challenge that principle, then I believe the city has a responsibility to defend that action. I don't believe that, because that could be applicable to anybody that flies in and out of the airport. And, and I think we have that responsibility to defend whether aircraft can use the airport. And so I would, you know, it's certainly up to the applicant whether they want to consummate that, what we believe, what we understand is an offer to sublease the, a facility up there to them. But, but I'd like the council to direct staff that, that, you know, that they be amenable to signing a sublease agreement on existing facilities. And then if Reach cares to wait out this period and continue a temporary operation down there and let this thing vet itself out through the process, but I don't want to be seen as, the city to be seen as not being, standing up and defending our right to use the, the airport and the public to use the airport. Now, I think by us sitting on the sidelines in here, we're setting a dangerous precedent that, that if somebody brings a new type of airplane or, you know, some flying activity up there, that they might find objectionable that we have, you know, we have a history of, of backing down and, and taking that, you know, a second back, not asserting our rights on that. And I think that's a mistake. So, you know, I, I don't think that, you know, there's, from, I believe what we're hearing is the way they're going to approach it, I don't believe they're going to want to exercise it. But I'd like to give the city manager the authority and the direction that we will sign that lease without an indemnity agreement to use that existing facility. And I'd like to see the council support that.
I would support that.
I think that's a great idea, Bruce, and I really strongly agree that that's what should happen. You know, if I had lived in Covelo or Leightonville or whatever, I would really wonder what the city of Willets is doing with not being able to, you know, shorten the time for those people. And, you know, the airport was made to fly in and out of. I mean, that's essentially what, what it's for. And if they make a side agreement, I think that the city ought to support it and go with it.
It's a, I don't believe, we don't have this slated as an action. I don't know that we need.
No, we don't, we don't. This is only for discussion only.
So, but, but I think the discussion will clearly give the, you know, if somebody has a dissimilar opinion, then this would certainly be an opportunity to hear.
Do, would this have to be in the form of, of direction, or do you think a resolution of some sort?
I don't think we need either one. The city manager has, she, she made that decision, and taking, it wasn't a wrong decision. I'm not criticizing necessarily, but, well, I guess I am saying it's a wrong decision, I wouldn't be bringing this up. But, but I'm not, I'm not holding anybody, you know, she was looking out for the interests of the city. And she, if she had the authority to not sign it without asking us, then she has the authority to change her mind and sign it.
Okay, so we just say the words?
I think that that's what I'm saying is, is that she has, unless someone here speaks and changes people's minds, or, you know, I mean, this isn't a vote, but I think it gives.
If I could weigh in just a little bit, we haven't yet seen the initial study. It's going to be due in about a week. We're told that the major issue from Keep the Code is that the spotted owl and nesting areas that are maybe near the airport. And I think it's premature for the council to direct staff to sign a, a sublease agreement until we know a little bit more. And I'd like to see the initial study and see what's recommended in terms of mitigation and what the risks are, and analyze it and see whether it is prudent to sign a sublease agreement. Or are we getting ourselves into a case where we can count on being sued and, and absorbing all of that ourselves and not passing along any liability to the applicant? And so I hear the mayor loud and clear and other council members that you support this concept and you'd like to see this go forward. And we're well, well aware of that direction and that desire. But even, even having heard you on this, I plan on giving you my independent analysis and advice when it comes time to putting an ink on the paper.
I, I have a question about that. So let's say, for example, if the study, the EIR, the mini EIR, shows that there is a possible impact to the spotted owl, for example, wouldn't that also mean that the impact has been there for the last fifty years? And if so, could there be a retroactive action taken for all the aircraft that have been using the airport in, in that time?
I don't know. I really can't comment on, on that.
I would just like to add that, Jim, I appreciate your concern and your legal advice. My concern is that I want the city to be proactive in securing this really business and commerce opportunity up at the airport. And the, my understanding, and maybe this is incorrect, but that the study is for the continued use, you know, for a, for a lease agreement, the official lease agreement, not for a temporary lease agreement. I mean, that might be splitting hairs. But to the extent that I think we have all given our opinion to the city manager, if you want a little bit more cover as far as, you know, us taking this action, I would be more than happy to have a special city council meeting to, to take a vote. I don't know if Reach would take us up on it at this point. Not the full project. I really hope that they continue to move forward with that. I think that there is real assets to this airport that are different than Ukiah, and they've shared those with us, and I agree with all of those. I think that they will be moving forward up there, but the lack of what I feel like is proactive action on behalf of the council could be read as being, you know, anti-business and anti, you know, that we're, we're being unduly swayed by a very minority part of our population.
Anna Blair was very clear with me that nobody at Reach, all the way up to the top, questions the city's commitment to this project. questions the city's commitment to this project. So, that is not at issue with them whatsoever. They, you know, they wanted to get going and they attempted to negotiate some, some mutual acceptable, acceptable conditions with Keep the Code, and that didn't come to fruition. And so, they had to make a business decision moving forward with temporary operations. It is very disappointing news to us, but I think we can all understand why that is. They do, they did enter into a very limited agreement for a facility at Yucaya Airport. So, it's not a long-term agreement whatsoever because they are still very much on board with their plans to be at the Wilkes Airport.
Do you think they would, if we made a offer of a temporary lease agreement, do you think they would take us up on it? Or do you think that they would?
Well, they've already gone by.
They would write out, right, they would, they would write out that limited agreement?
I, that, that's a question for them, but I suspect they would write out that agreement.
Well, I still want to put it on the table. I, I knew Jim has to take this approach. I think it's expected of the city attorney, but I think the principle is, is too important to, to, to sit aside to it. I'd, I'd just toss it back in their court and then they, they can make that, they can make that determination, but I don't, I don't want to be the, seen as anyway as an impediment. If we had signed that, that agreement a month ago, they would have, you know, it would, what would have happened would have, would have happened, but I'm...
I do have one other question. I'm glad that they didn't sign an agreement that said they wouldn't run at night. Is there any way to let them know that, that that is in no way the City of Wilkes' position? You know, whatever...
I'm not asking...
Things that other groups come up with, like, are they clear that we want them to run however they see fit to run?
They're clear about it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not suggesting that we have any covenants that, they can, it's, airport's got lights on it, that's what they're there for. FAA paid for it and we took their money to put them in there, and that's what it is. So, anyway, any public comments on this item? Yeah? Can you just come up and introduce yourself, please?
I'm Ramona Waldman.
Pardon me?
Ramona Waldman.
Thank you.
Yes, and I think you've got it, you've mistaken the concerns of, of public that have, I understand that you guys need to have the airport support itself, I understand that. And I think that Reach has, I've written, I personally have written to Adrienne, and, and there's been very, very frustrating in my desire to try to communicate with her. You know, when you start an initial study, and Mr. Lance must know this, it's, you're supposed to have a SEQA checklist that's given immediately, and I have requested that repeatedly, and I have not seen it. I don't know, all I can say is, initial study must not have started. And I wrote a letter tonight to you, Adrienne, saying that I'm assuming it hasn't started because I have not seen a SEQA checklist. Please correct me if I'm wrong. And here I'm hearing that it is started. That's like, that's like, wow! I'm trying to be forthcoming, and I'd like you guys to be forthcoming. She wanted to, to know what our concerns were. We've given date-stamped letters multiple times about what our concerns are. The spotted owl is one of them. It's also the neighbors, they're 250 feet away. It's like, I think that Mr. Whitney, I don't know if you guys saw his letter in the newspaper, but he kind of explained it. We are not against Reach operating at the airport. We are just concerned about the neighbors who would be affected and, and the spotted owls, which there are definitely nests in the area that would be affected. Now, one, remember, airplanes fly a certain way. They fly out on a runway. Helicopters can fly any way they want, and they also fly lower than airplanes do. So, that's, that's the concern. We're not, I mean, we just want the mitigations that would protect. It's not, I'm a nurse, I don't know if you guys know that. I know all about emergency medical service in rural areas, that there's not enough of it. It's just like, we all live in this place together, and I think we need to be considerate and respectful of each other. And that's all Keep the Code has asked for, is respect for the neighbors, respect for the other creatures that live. And it doesn't seem like an impossible thing for Reach to, to, you know, modify their flight pattern so they don't affect the spotted owl, put some kind of protection for the neighbors. Airplanes and helicopters are very different, and that airport is, aircraft is not, yes, it's airplanes. It's, if you look on your guys' own documents, it says that it's, the main aircraft is a, I think it's a twin-engine, fixed wing. It doesn't, you know, you got, yeah, of course, everyone's happy when the helicopters come in and help with the, with the fires and stuff, it benefits all of us. But this particular thing is going to be 24/7. People who live there are never going to know when it's going to start, you know, in the middle of the night, all of a sudden it comes. And yes, but maybe we all do want people to be safe, but it's, what's wrong with protecting the people a little bit? It's not going to cost a lot, it's going to cost whatever it costs, and the people are going to be protected. They live there. You know, people don't want to move because of, of this operation. I think that the respect the city pays to the neighbors will benefit you tremendously in the fact that people appreciate that respect. And in future, you guys are going to be neighbors with Brooktrails forever. You know, it's not going to go away, so showing respect will be, will be to your benefit. And I don't, I don't think that, I don't think that the mitigations will be outrageous. They'll just be, but, what people do all the time when they do, like, one of the things we did present on our time, our date-stamped letters is a UCSF put a helipad in the hospital, new hospital they have on the bay. And it's, they did a decibel study and...
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. And, and they did that, and then they put, then they had mitigations for the neighbors. It's not uncommon. Sutter also did the same thing. They, they had mitigations for the neighbors. It's not uncommon. That's all. To protect.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? All right. Anybody other comments up here? I think we're done with this.
I want to just sum it up. I, I thought back when this all came up that we were going to perhaps have a special session to, to consider the temporary operation with whatever limitations were involved with a temporary, that, that wouldn't constitute a project and therefore wouldn't have to go through the whole SEQA thing first. That hasn't happened, it hasn't come back to us for a decision. I, I do think there are some legitimate concerns about mitigations that might be included when the assessment process goes forward, and that that's what a SEQA review is going to let us know, what are, what are reasonable issues to bring up and mitigate. The temporary operation, especially if it were limited to daytime, certainly seems a very legitimate use of an airport. So, I, you know, if, if there's any way we can have them, you know, use the airport before the longer-term project goes through, I am for it. But, you know, I, I do think that's their decision, and it sounds like they've already actually made that decision.
It sounds like it has to.
Bruce, I, I've always heard, and maybe it's not true, that anybody that was close to the airport knew when they bought the property that there was an airport there and there was going to be people coming and going. If I'm wrong, then, then I'm wrong, but that's the story that I've heard. And also, there's never been anything said, in my knowledge, that it couldn't be a fixed wing or it couldn't be a helicopter or anything else, it was just aircraft. And I think we need a clarification on that. Have the people in Brooktrails that live by the airport, have they been made aware that they live by an airport? I mean, it's, it's real simple, and I'm not asking you to answer that, I'm just saying that that's a story that I've heard, and I've heard it for a whole lot of years. And I just, if it's wrong, then we need to know that. Thank you.
Yeah, I believe it's a disclosure item.
I would think it would be a disclosure item, and certainly they built the airport before they built any houses there, because I was there. So, I think we, unless there's any other comments on that, we can't, we can't make a voting, it's not, it's not for an action item. Do you have any other council, I mean, excuse me, city manager report?
Item B.
Oh, I'm sorry. Absolutely right. Item B is a discussion on possible action to authorize the city manager to execute a professional services agreement with the RGS for an interim human services individual not to exceed 40 grand through the rest of this fiscal year.
So, just to make a correction, it's not an individual we're contracting with, it's a, they're actually a nonprofit firm. They are an outfit that usually hires retired public sector employees. Sometimes people have left the public sector but not retired. But they, they have a lot of expertise in different areas, human resources is one of them. They came to our attention through REMA, our Redwood Empire Municipal Insurance Fund, a few months back. I, I think that there had been some interest expressed by other cities to have some sort of HR resource at a, at a discounted group rate. And when our need arose, when our HR person resigned back in December, we, we initiated some discussion with them, initially envisioning that they would provide somebody on-site, you know, a couple, three days a week. Because they are located in Marin County, it was too far of a distance unless we provided housing, and, and that wasn't something I felt was cost-effective to us. So, I discussed with them the idea of providing the resource, but primarily off-site, so not, not a regularly scheduled on-site. They, they would be here on-site from time to time, but much of what needs to be done can easily be done off-site. And really what we're looking for is the expertise to help us manage some, some pretty complex issues. Currently, for example, we've got five extended leave cases, so five different employees that are on some sort of extended leave, whether it's workers' comp or, you know, disability or family medical leave. And there is, those are very labor-intensive to monitor and manage and, you know, ensure that everything is being done and reported properly and the employee is getting paid appropriately. So, given that and given the fact that through some informal discussions with other HR professionals in the area, we believe that the applicant pool, once we do a recruitment, will be limited because of our current classification and salary schedule for this position. So, it's something that I will have an interest in evaluating during the budget process. So, in the meanwhile, I'm looking to contract with RGS to get the resource in place. Currently, the finance director and myself are trying to figure that, and it's, it's quite a big area responsibility. For your information, the cost of, if, if our HR person had not left, the cost from December 1st through June 30th for that position's weighted salary would have been $41,000, and this contract would be a not-to-exceed amount of $40,000. I think it'll be significantly less than that because when they first sent the proposal in to me, that was mid-December, and obviously we're a month into that. So, I'm looking for your support on this contract.
Is that a motion?
No, I have a question first. I will make a motion, but I did, I did some math and it looks like it's going to be a half-time position. Is that enough to do what's needed to be done?
Susan and I will still have some involvement with this. They, it wouldn't be cost-effective to contract with an outside consultant to do some of the very routine day-to-day paperwork, but we'll certainly work with them on that to make sure that we are, you know, taking care of everything. There are certain notifications that just have to go out timely. For example, when an employee is out for, on a medical, you know, health-related issue for a few days, you have, that triggers a FMLA notification, Family Medical Leave Act. And so, those types of things occur constantly, and, you know, we, we can't use, we can't fall on the excuse or explanation that we don't have enough staff. There are certain things we just have to do, and we have to find a way to make sure they happen.
Okay, well, I'll move staff's recommendation.
I'll second.
Any other further comments? Any public comments? Seeing none, roll call, please?
Yes. Councilor Ross, yes?
Yes.
Madam Wal?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other?
Just a couple, and, and kind of a segue into this is, how I would sum it up is we are just continuing to plug a lot of holes, especially with regard to personnel. And as I mentioned, we have several employees that are out on various types of leave. Some of those are extended leaves. I think one of them is wrapping up and the employee will be returning fairly soon. But I, I can report to you, I can't give you details, of course, but John Sherman is out on an extended leave until March 1st. And so, I am exploring our options there to fill that function during his absence. We've had Frank Howard, our retired building inspector, filling in, which was initially envisioned to be a very temporary period, and I, because Frank's been out of town, I don't know what his availability may be or not be. But we also have some major projects that really can't afford any delays in the process. And so, I don't, I think that this is going to end up being a combination of, of solutions to have a whole remedy during this period. In the Public Works Department, we have, we're down people there. We've been carrying a vacancy of a maintenance worker position for some time, and now we have a need for additional temporary, an additional temporary position. So, we're going to be making some movement on that to get that need filled. In addition to that, we've had several IT issues recently, just today, as a matter of fact, our server went down, was down for about three hours. Happens to be the day that we have to transmit payroll to the bank for the direct deposits to happen timely. So, you know, we deal with these kinds of issues on, on an ongoing basis. I mean, it's not the same issue all the time, but these are the kind of things that happen behind the scenes that create an urgent need to drop everything else and deal with them. Let's see, in addition, Rod and Suzie attended a LAFCO meeting with me on January 5th where our MSR was reviewed by the commission. Holly sits on that body. And they didn't adopt it that day because of a technicality on the agenda, the way it was worded. It didn't really state that it was slated for adoption, so they deferred that to February 2nd, I believe the date is. But they did close the public hearing and got to a consensus about the comments that they were accepting of or not accepting of on the MSR. So, I imagine that we'll have an updated version that Bruce Barocco, who's been working on this for LAFCO, will transmit to me a couple weeks before that meeting, and I'll get that to all of you. That's it.
Okay, thank you. You know, I had this printout of the committee reports and I stuffed it into my wrong folder. Do you happen to, anybody happen to have another one of those?
The appointments?
Yeah. Yeah, thank you. So, this is what I'm proposing if people have serious objections.
Isn't that...
I'm taking it out of order because I'm taking a mayoral privilege here. I need, I'm going to do this item and then I'm going to leave. I have a conflict here, not a legal conflict, I have a business conflict. And so, I'm going to turn the rest of the meeting over to Ron. So, I, I'm going to take this up, these appointments up now. So, MCAG, Larry stays on MCAG, Holly's the alternate. LAFCO, Holly stays on that. Your term goes for another four years, Holly. Wasn't up this time. Two years. MTA stays with Madge. Revide Ed is Ron and Holly. MSW stays with Ron. I was going to, I'm going to, I would like to put Holly on League of California Cities.
Sure.
And then Water and Wastewater stays Larry and I. I'd like to put the, on the downtown, Main Street projects, the downtown plan that Holly and I sat on before. I'd like to put you on that, Larry.
Thank you.
Because you have a state downtown that none of the rest of us really have. And then, then going back into Caltrans ad hoc, I was going to put Holly up on that instead of you. So, let you guys trade that.
With the...
With me. Caltrans ad hoc would be Holly and I. Finance is, of course, the mayor and the vice mayor. The Mendocino Museum Advisory Board, Madge, would you up for that?
I guess, EDFC doesn't appear on here. On this one.
Right.
I'm on that.
Because we eliminated our contribution to EDFC.
Does that mean I'm no longer a rep or...
That's the assumption.
Because they think I'm still on.
Well, if you...
You could probably still serve if you wanted.
If you want to still serve, that is fine.
Yes, I do, actually.
So...
I guess I could be on...
What's the museum advisory board? Is that currently vacant?
Mm-hmm, it has been for some time. That's the city's rep. They also have a third district rep to that body.
So, solid waste, ad hoc, be the mayor and the vice mayor. And again, on the solar array, I'd like to sit in on that. Main Street, we've already talked about that. I wrote down in here, before this conversation, evening night, I had suggested that Madge and I do the Willett Center for the Arts, but I'm willing to step aside on that. I'm not, I've had some contact with the group, but I'm willing to take suggestions. Anybody that would like to participate in that that has a stronger interest than I?
I would like to, if it's okay.
Anybody else have an interest in that? Madge, are you interested?
No, but what I wanted to say is that I've been fairly immersed in the solid waste franchise renewal process so far and I would like to be able to continue to invest my time in that one.
I'll consider that. So, does anybody else...
And if I'm doing the museum, I don't think I could do the art center too. That's quite a few committees.
Who's that?
Ron. Anybody else interested in the art center? Been more interest about thirty minutes ago.
I'm certainly interested, I just don't want to be on another committee, that's all.
Well, here's a possibility. If, Madge, if you're interested in doing the art center, we do have the ability to appoint...
No, she doesn't, she doesn't want to do the art center.
Well, I'm willing to do that instead of the museum. I'm not willing to do both, I just...
Right, what I was going to say is you could appoint, we could appoint someone who's not on the council to the museum on our behalf, much like we do to the library. Just that that would be a possibility.
I mean, I don't think we've had anybody on, well, you did it for one.
I did it for a little bit, yeah.
Okay. Well, until somebody approaches me with an interest, I will do the art center with Ron.
Okay.
And if somebody... It's not to preclude anybody that would care to get involved in that, I'd be not offended.
So, can we back up to solar? I'm not sure I caught who.
I'm going to, I'm going to, the solar array project, I have myself and Ron on that. And if Madge wants to continue on the waste, solid waste thing, I would defer to that, that's okay. So, I'd stay with Madge and Ron.
And I don't feel like I have as much, well, you know, that you could take over on the solar more easily.
I did, I did sit as chair of the Mendocino Solid Waste Management Board for ten years. I have a little bit of...
Oh, okay. Well, maybe after.
And I negotiated the last contract with the city. So, I, but I'm, that's okay if you have...
You are the mayor, you can decide.
If you're learning to, I'll deal with it when it gets into this chambers. I just thought I might be able to deal with it a little better there, but that's fine.
Okay.
And, yeah.
Okay.
You have to get going, but the other thing, one other thing I was interested in bringing up is I'm wondering if we, if the mayor would consider making an ad hoc committee for following up on the Justice Center. That's something that's sort of, city staff has so many priorities that I think it would behoove us to have someone who's keeping up on it.
I don't think that, well, I think if that progresses on a little bit more, I think right now we're adequately served.
Okay.
I don't think we need another committee to deal with that. If that issue warms up.
Gets to some sort of negotiation?
Yeah, begin to get some negotiation of all the conceptual, I think we're... Good. Okay. Ron, would you mind taking over the meeting for me? Apologize.
And then, can we get a printout of who's on what? Whatever we just said, yeah.
You didn't take notes.
I did. They look like scribbles.
Okay, next item is number nine, department recommendations. First is administration.
Let's see, I've covered HR. I don't know if Kathy has anything. Suzie, I think, had a couple of things.
You're still doing, Holly, you're still doing the radio, aren't you?
Yes. Hi, I just wanted to give you a little update that last meeting, I talked about the overhead allocation and I expected that I would have it back by now. I've made a couple of queries to the company that's actually producing the information and I anticipate a final version. We still have the draft, I had a couple of questions. But, and I anticipate that we'll have that in the next week or two. February 4th, I'm going to be meeting, Adrian and I will be meeting with Mary Flynn, who is Muni Services, and she's going to be going over our sales tax and where we stand as of December 31st. So, we should have a good, a good thing there. And then, the auditor is planning to be here February 4th through the 6th. So, he has all the information from year-end and he should be done by the end of the 6th. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. Do we have a finance committee meeting scheduled for...
I believe it's for late in February.
Okay, we don't have a date yet, do we?
I believe it's the 24th.
We will provide a calendar of all the various meetings at the, that was supposed to happen tonight and we got sidetracked with other issues, so we'll get that to you. I did have a question for Suzie. Sorry. When we meet with Mary Flynn on the 4th of February, I don't recall that we ever got our report at the end of, what would it have been? September?
I don't recall.
Okay.
I'd have to go back.
It seemed like it's been some time since she was in. So, we just need to make sure that we've covered everything that hasn't been covered previously.
Yeah, and I also want to talk to her about the possibility of business licenses and see if there's something that we can do that maybe might bring in some more money that way.
When we do, you do have a finance committee meeting and are moving into budget season again, I just wanted to reiterate that I think it'd be really neat if we could get a two-year budget. And I realize a lot depends on labor negotiations and whatnot, but it would sure be a nice efficiency to be able to work towards that.
I've heard a couple of things. I've asked around to a couple of the finance directors locally and I've heard both good and bad about that. The bad is that by the time you get into their first year, so much has changed that you're practically redoing it all over again. And so, they, the people that had done it had reverted back to one year because they felt like it was a lot of duplicative work.
They ended up doing it one year anyway.
Yeah, exactly. Because just like our mid-year, you would still do an annual review and they didn't feel that, they didn't feel it was beneficial. So, I mean, it's something to keep in mind, though.
I wonder if it would be, you know, prior to the official kickoff of the budget session to, you know, bring forward the calendar, maybe like when that's happening, when we're sort of mapping out the process for that, that at some meeting early on, we could have that, a discussion about the budget document. How, you know, because councilmember Strong has brought that up. Whether or not we move towards a two-year, you know, there might be things that some councilmembers would like to do differently and it would be really good to get your feedback, like that doesn't work for this reason or, you know, maybe we want more narration or maybe we want, you know, it might be worthwhile to have that conversation as a group about what the process is going to look like.
Sure, I think their perfect time would actually be at the mid-year budget review because we're, you know, giving you a snapshot of time and then looking forward to our annual process.
So, we do have a mid-year budget review?
Yes, that will be coming up early February.
Mid-year.
As soon as I can get it done, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on admin?
Yeah.
Public safety?
Didn't have anything on legal, was that...
No, except we did talk about having a Brown Act refresher luncheon, maybe, in the next month or so. And possibly also a refresher on the Public Records Act. It's probably too much to combine. They probably deserve each full hour. So, anyway, Adrian will probably be contacting you about a convenient time to schedule that. I'm thinking like an hour, an hour and a half on a lunch date that works for everybody.
That would be two lunches then?
Yeah, I'm thinking Public Records Act maybe in May, but doing the Brown Act here in February.
Okay.
And this would include councils, well, city staff and the fire department is also interested in joining us for that. But my question to Jim is this, in keeping with Brown Act compliance, we would have to publicly notice this since it would have majority of council members?
True.
Okay.
True, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Jerry. What, as far as the Public Records Act request, what do we as council members need to know about that? Is that more for staff or more for council?
It would be more for staff.
Yeah, okay.
Wouldn't exclude you?
We could attend if we wanted, but...
But you don't get lunch?
We don't, we don't, you know, we're not in the business of providing that information.
Okay. Let's hear from our chief.
Well, it was a relatively quiet New Year's. We had three officers working that night and there were a lot of booms, but I got to tell you, I called in and for once, we didn't get a single call regarding the booms. Not that...
I did.
They didn't call the police department, so, and it wasn't as busy as the nights before, the nights after. So, that was probably a good thing.
By the way, on the booms, do you ever find bullet damage from bullets that actually go up and come down?
We have in the past. Most of the time, somebody comes home finds, we had one, about five, six years ago, somebody from Bagging Wheel called in and heard a pop while they were sitting in their living room and a bullet had come through their ceiling and hit a Christmas tree ornament and shattered it right in front of them.
And no one's ever been hurt by these things?
Well, not that they've called and reported.
Yeah.
So, I don't encourage people to shoot their guns in the air and a lot of times, a lot of the rapport you hear is not coming from within the city, it's coming outside. We have on occasion found folks with firecrackers, that sort of thing, both for Frontier Day's time and also during this time of year, but...
I go pots and pans.
Yeah, pots and pans are okay. We do get fires. Seems like any excuse for a fire, warming fires are okay, giant bonfires are not. And so, little things like that. So, that's one thing. Since the last meeting, one of our officers in training is off of training. Officer DeRozio is out on the street now. And we still have one in training. And we're proceeding forward with our 911, I guess, modernization. Every couple of years, we get money from the state, state's funding our voice login recorder. Basically, when you call 911, and I played the tape back for some of the members of the public who don't realize they're being recorded, but you are being recorded when you call 911 in our business line and radio and there's a device that captures all of that and the state's going to pay to the tune of about thirteen thousand dollars to install one. And that's coming via our 911. I guess it's an allotment money that we are allotted. It basically, on your phone bill, when you see 911 surcharge, that goes to the state and eventually comes back to the public safety answering point, which is like our dispatch. In addition to that, we're looking at ergonomic furniture. There's going to be some consoles that we're looking at and the state has agreed to cover the cost of those as long as we're within the budget of our allotment. So, we've talked to some vendors, I'm waiting for some quotes on that. So, that's moving forward, so...
So, on that, on that new system, you're saying it will automatically record the 911 calls?
Yeah.
Will it also have a GPS type of feature?
That's different. This is, all this is, is recording the audio calls. The new version of, the new 911 system we'll be getting, will be able to capture longitude, latitude calls, most of your cellphones that come in. Obviously, your landlines, it seems like those are becoming fewer and fewer, have addresses that are connected. But your cellphones, a lot of them have built-in GPS and there's two technologies out there. One that basically triangulates to the near cell tower and the other one, which is actually tells 911 exactly where your phone is. So, we've heard of cases where someone's kidnapped and they're found by their phone, but that's that technology there.
But you're saying that our system will not have that feature?
No, our voice recorder will not have that feature. Our 911 system will.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's part of the enhancement. That part, we're due to have them install our system in March. We're the last of the entities to get ours, which works out good because we have some infrastructure to update.
Does that GPS fixing the location work even if your cellphone is mine?
I don't know. I would suspect not. It has to connect up with the system.
It needs to be on to call 911, so...
Yeah, true. Yeah, so, as far as whether Big Brother can watch you one way or the other, I don't know the answer to that. I know that if you call 911, it activates the system and then it finds you.
That's good.
I'm pretty certain they're not going to catch mine because this is a dial-up.
I just wanted to suggest to Larry that he keep his cellphone charged up.
Okay, thank you, chief. Community development, do we have anything on that?
Yes. Let's see, Minto Mill Project, the final conditions were prepared on that. And I don't know if they've been signed yet. I got the email update from Dusty, who's, you know, as you know, is only here a couple of afternoons a week. O'Reilly's, the draft conditions have been, or are being prepared, rather, for that.
The which?
Draft conditions. So, what happens is the O'Reilly's Auto Parts.
Down by Willett's Power in that...
Oh, is that a new name?
It's a new business that's coming to town.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I would travel more.
O'Reilly's, if you don't know it, yeah.
John's Place, a couple of different things there. The, the location that burned down needs to be addressed. The fire chief is working on that and with John Sherman's absence, we just, we need to figure out how to better coordinate that because it's really a partnership between the city and the fire department to address those issues. Obviously, I think the whole community wants to see that cleaned up as quickly as possible. And so, the fire chief was trying to ascertain where they're at in that process. And so the fire chief was trying to ascertain where they're at in that process, and I think he was having difficulty connecting with the, with the owners. So, um, it's just something that we are continuing to push on, so you know that.
So we don't have any information on Mr. Chesser's timeline rebuilding or, or any of the interested parties?
Well, that's the other part of this, that the, um, the John's Place Bar has submitted a business license to relocate. Uh, I think this is essentially temporarily, but it could be long-term, um, until the old location is rebuilt, and that remains to be seen if that will happen or not. Um, so his, uh, application for the new location is moving through the, through the process. Um, and.
Are you allowed to say where that is?
Where, where is it?
The old solar building.
The old, old solar building? So, Sun Cycle?
Sun Cycle.
Wasn't that a bar or something? No, that's your, that's further south.
The round window.
Down by the vets building.
Crosswalk answers.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And then the airport layout plan update that's been underway, Meet and Hunt is working on that, and, um, that, that was the one that we received the FAA grant funding for. And then, um, basically what's, uh, driving this for the most part are the tree issues at the airport that are, you know, create a potential safety concern. And so they did a LiDAR survey, which is something that we had done in the city, actually, a few months back, last year at some point, to map out the sewer lines. Um, so they use the same, um, technology to survey the trees. That survey was completed well before Christmas, and then it takes ninety days for that company to get the data back to Meet and Hunt. So they really can't do much to complete the report, this update, until they get that data back. So we're looking for that report to be to us sometime in the springtime.
And what is this, what is this on? I didn't have.
This is on the airport. So we have tall trees, not, not generally conducive for aircraft. And, um, and so when Dan Ramsey and I went down last December, I think it was, to meet with, well, it was December of twenty thirteen, to meet with the FAA to get our, um, some sort of project back on track to, you know, tap into the grant funding. Um, this was what was identified as needing to happen first and foremost, to update the airport layout plan. And I believe that requirement is every five years to do that update?
It's supposed to be, yes.
Okay. So we have to do this in order to forward some other project, like maybe a runway improvement. Um, and so this, uh, airport layout plan will be completed in the springtime at some point. I don't have a more definitive date for that.
Okay, thank you. Public Works. Here you are.
It's been so long, I have lots to report.
It's been a long time.
Um, December was a busy month for Public Works and Engineering and, uh, the Water Department and Sewer Department. Um, the Public Works crew, I heard, heard a lot of good, uh, feedback from the community on the work they did to prepare for the storm on December eleventh, when we had all the flooding. They got in, cut a lot of logs off bridges and cleaned a lot of leaves off the streets. And, um, I thought the, the event, the flood event went, went pretty well, as well as can be expected. Um, didn't get, it didn't turn out as bad as we, we had anticipated, but, um, we, uh, I think we went through close to forty tons of sand at the sand station that we set up over here beside the Police Department. Um, I think that was an ongoing effort for a couple of days, but, um, not, not very long after that, we fixed it, they fixed a sewer lateral for the Pinecone Motel and the adjacent residence that we, uh, there was a backup, and we went out and checked it out, and the Sewer Department put the camera down there, and it turns out, I'm gonna guess, when the Holly Street signal went in, and we couldn't remember when exactly that was, um, they put the conduit in for the traffic light and cut the sewer lateral out of the way, and then, so we had a six-inch lateral, I believe, um, because it serviced the motel and the residence, and they bridged a little piece of, I think, three-inch in between so they would have enough cover over their conduit. So the conduit went straight through, and I think that's been an ongoing problem for several years now. Um, I think there was an issue a few years back, um, but anyway, we figured out what, what happened. And brought Caltrans out there to look at it and let them inspect.
Who has jurisdiction over that for, with, was it the city or Caltrans over them cutting through the lateral?
We haven't really had time to, to, to talk, even talk to them anymore about it. They came out and took pictures and.
I think that was like two thousand, two thousand and one?
It was, it was a while ago, yeah. We couldn't, so it's been probably that long that that lateral has been like that. So, if you can envision the, you know, just a reducer, and it wasn't sealed, and it was a, it was a huge, you know, it's one of those I N I, um, contributors, we'll call it, so, uh, but it's fixed now. Um, the other thing that happened with the rain is we found a lot of new water leaks. I don't know if it's because groundwater comes up and the leaks start surfacing, but, uh, we fixed one on Redwood, one on East Valley, and, um, there's one more, I can't remember where exactly where it was, but we also fixed two more on Main Street, uh, between Commercial and, uh, State. But, um, on that note, I believe it's tomorrow, we're supposed to get all the materials to replace that line. Um, so as soon as the Public Works crew is done with, uh, the groundwater treatment building, done with that foundation, we're gonna move to that, and then also, um, helping put a valve in at the, at Centennial Reservoir that needs to go in. Uh, so, we have some, some work lined out for us, but Darren assures me that'll be easy digging because it's all fill material. But, um, our issue will be crossing, we have to cross over Main Street to get to the west side, so that'll, that'll, that'll be a little challenging with traffic and traffic control, but it'll, it shouldn't take very long. Um, we got the encroachment prevent for that work around Thanksgiving. I, I probably mentioned that last time. We just have to get, uh, consultation from the, from the tribe, from Turbot Valley, that they know that we're, what we're doing, and if we discover any, any, uh, artifacts, we'll, we'll notify them. Um, yesterday at the water treatment plant, we had final inspection. Uh, the state was here and went through the project with the contractor and our staff, and everything went, went well. They're gonna start the punch list over, we're gonna start the punch list next Monday. And, um, there's still some work to be done, but I think we have until May first to close, close the project out completely. So we're hoping to have construction done hopefully by March first. It's gonna be, gonna be close, but, um, there's some little things that need to be, need to be wrapped up. I think one of the big, one of the, the big things that came out of yesterday's meeting is it's going to become what's considered, what they call a T-four plant. So we're all, we're going to have to have grade four operators, and I figured, bring that up as soon, I found out about this last night, so.
You mean the plant itself is designated as a higher?
Right, so it's a more.
And it's because of the improvements that we've made at the plant?
Yes, it's a, it's a, um, more advanced plant, I guess is the best way to, to look at it, so.
So the operators have to be upgraded as well?
That's correct.
And how much time do we have for that?
The first, the first indication I had was two years. We had two years to get everybody up to, up to grade four.
Doable, that's not a.
Uh, just a matter of, um, taking, I, I think it's a few courses, a few twelve-hour courses. And since everybody's already, uh, grade three, it's grade three plus a few courses.
This will also, for your information, trigger meet and confer with the union, uh, because we will have to create a new job classification for a, a level four operator salary schedule to go with that. And, um, that triggers the meet and confer process with the union.
Good thing we have an H R person coming in.
Um, anyway, the other thing going on up there is our reservoir pumps. Um, we have been dealing with, well, we found to be the only company that will work on those types of pumps in California, I guess, or within reasonable driving distance of us in Fresno, and had some difficulties, but we're supposed to get a second pump back to the, uh, at least back up here. Supposed to be completed, uh, supposed to be done by Friday, late Friday, maybe early Saturday, so we'll have it up here by, uh, next Monday.
And, and the first pump that, that had to be what, rebuilt, or do we, we got a new one?
Yeah, we have a new one.
So that's in place?
No, the new one has, was an eighteen-week lead time.
Okay.
And it is going to be done, I believe, within the next two weeks. It'll be.
So how many working pumps do we have there right now?
We currently have one working pump.
And we have, we have the, the rebuilt one coming?
Correct.
In, you said two weeks, was that?
Well, the rebuilt one will be done, well, the first rebuilt one will be done this week, Friday or Saturday.
Okay, so we'll have then two operating.
Correct.
And then we're gonna get the other one in two weeks.
Within two weeks, yes.
So we'll have three then.
Right.
And I understand that there's a fourth one that's being rebuilt for reserve?
Correct.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, and, and what's the story on that one?
On the fourth one?
Yeah.
There was some, uh, there was some damage, uh, to the, to the, to the housing, to the, to the, to the bells. I, I, you know, I, I saw pictures, like basically, um, corrosion causing, um, I can't think of the word right off the top of my head, but, um, basically, if you look at it, it looks like voids and.
So, so, all right, so we'll have that, and, and when do you figure we're gonna have that one?
Uh, I'm afraid to try to estimate.
No big rush.
It, it, it should, it shouldn't be more than, more than three or four weeks.
Okay.
Once we get it all.
Okay, so in about two weeks, we'll be full complement with three.
Correct.
And within a month, we'll say, or a month and a half, we'll have actual three in operation plus a reserve.
Right.
We'll be in great shape.
Right. We had, uh, um, these pumps were delivered before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
And, uh, I think we had, the initial discussion was like a five-day turnaround, a month before Thanksgiving. So, um, they had to order new motors, and the new motor, motors, according to the, to the repair place, got stuck in customs and for some time.
Where'd they come from?
That I don't, that I don't know, so.
Can you let me know when the installation, that's the one that involves divers, is that correct?
No, it just involves cranes. We just have to get a couple of cranes.
Can you let me know when the first one's going in?
Uh, it could be as early as, um, Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, um, because Ora will have, uh, at least one crane on site to work on the clarifier repair that's gonna happen next week. And, uh, so, we're going to try to, uh, save some money by, um, having them do the work since they have the equipment on site, instead of having to pay to get the cranes there, so.
Does the fourth one have to go to Fresno, too, or is it gonna be repaired on, on site?
It's already, it's already there, so.
Oh, it's in Fresno?
Yeah, it's in Fresno, and it's just been an ongoing, I think on December, on December ninth, we, we were, we were two weeks out from having two, two working pumps back, and then, so it's, it's.
So Rod, um, obviously the pumps are a real critical part of the, uh, the operation, and, and they all went on service at the same time. Is there anything else, and, and we have an almost new plant or refurbished plant?
Uh-huh.
Is there any other equipment like, you know, critical like the pumps that could be a long-term, a long lead item that could possibly fail that we need to take a look at? Um, just asking, not needing a.
I think we have, we have some other, some other repairs that, 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 uh, we're working on right now.
Okay.
Um, some valves, I think that, you know, there's, there's a valve below Morris Reservoir that needs to be repaired, that's just, it's, it's difficult to get to, you know, because it's down off the hill, and there's no way to get any equipment really to it, but, um.
Okay.
So, so, the other, you know, the other big repair is the three-million gallon tank, which is.
But there's nothing that you can anticipate that we ought to preventive maintenance kind of thing? Extraordinary preventive maintenance?
Not this, I'll consult Steve Anderson, because he has this wish list that he's been working on for several, several years now. He just copies and adds to it, so.
Good.
Anyway, um, that's most of it for up there. The other thing is probably at the twenty, February twenty-fifth meeting, um, we expect to have Humboldt Street plans, like for phase two of Humboldt Street, for, uh, for review. Should have a plant, plans and a cost estimate for the, for phase two of that project, hope to do this summer.
The, the drainage seems to be working really quite well. I checked it during the storm, you know, the new, um, drainage pipes there, there is, and I texted Adrian, there's a pretty massive pothole that I, I remember, like during the storm, I saw them filling with hot mix, but it was underwater, and I think that that all got blown out of there.
That one got filled. That was a, that was a bad one.
Yeah, so I don't know.
I don't know where that one came from, but it was.
It was pretty massive and it just appeared, but I don't know, I think it might need a, a top-off because it was filled during the, you know, during the storm event.
Larry?
Uh, two questions. First of all, is the Humboldt gonna run from Commercial Street down to Valley? Or is it gonna run all the way from State Street?
It's gonna run from Commercial to Valley. Um, that, a, a big part of that is the.
Fire department.
Yeah, yeah. And then there's also the, the waterline proposal, and, um, we just figured that was better to, to wait, as far as not putting in a new driveway at the fire department if it's going to move around or move completely, we don't really know, so. Um, we looked at it, and, um, rather than have a bunch of digouts, the idea is just to go through and grind, um, two tents, which is, um, two and a half, two and a half inches through the whole street, just get it, you know, get it all ground down so it kind of smoothed it out a little bit, and then bring it back, pave it back up, and make it a little more, put a better crown in it, and, and, uh, I think when we, when we walked it and looked at the sidewalks, it just seemed like it was, um, it wouldn't be a, a pro, a good project without fixing the sidewalks, because they're in such a bad, bad shape.
My next question is, time-wise, what are we talking about for travel on Humboldt? When they start the project, after it's bid and starts.
So do you mean how long will it be closed?
How long, yes.
How, how would we?
Redirlect there?
That's a good.
Have you talked about that at all?
We haven't, we haven't really figured out how we would, because once you grind, when you grind it, and, and you grind a couple of tents, you can travel on it. So then, then you're gonna do the, the concrete work before you pave it, you know, so, so you have something to pave to. And then paving shouldn't take, shouldn't take very long, you know, because it's not, because it's all straight and.
Okay, we should let, we should figure that out as a city and let the people that are, have businesses and stuff on that street know a long time ahead, ahead of time, that, uh, you know, their street is gonna be.
Because everyone else is gonna have to go Madden, all the through traffic is gonna have to go Madden.
Right. Well, yeah, it's the same, you know, we, we dealt with, we dealt with it in phase one, and trying to make sure that everybody's had access and, and, uh, make sure we communicated with all the businesses, um, what was coming, what we, what we hoped was coming, and, um, tried to, tried to stay out ahead of it as, as best we possibly could.
Okay, and then my next question is, what about the cover for the clarifier up at the water plant?
That's what's starting next week. No, yeah, but they're starting on the footings next week, the cover itself. But I was thinking about the hood, because the, the clarifier needs to get shut down, the hood, old hood comes out, the new hood goes in, so, um.
So that's summertime?
No, that's gonna be happening.
Okay, but it should be covered by summertime?
Yeah, yeah, it should be covered. Uh, I don't know, I, I think it's six weeks. I don't know exactly when that, when that started for the, for the cover itself. I don't know exactly when that, when that started for the, for the cover itself. Uh, it's a little unclear, we had a, the, the project manager for ORA moved on, so there were some communication difficulties for a little while with the holidays, and, um, over having a new project manager, and, um, I don't have a clear answers or a clear understanding of whether or not the building itself was ordered, or, or started, they started construction. It's my understanding that they did, they started early on the fabrication of the, the building itself. Um, just waiting on the, the columns, the, you know, the, the supports, because there was a height, there was a height issue to get it over the clarifier.
And what about, how far will it hang down, uh, from the roof down? I mean, is it gonna hang down below the?
I, I, I don't, I don't.
You don't know just.
Yeah, I don't know that one, I don't know that one, but that was, I mean, that's been a topic of discussion, and I just don't know where, where that ended up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry for saying these things to you, I shouldn't do it out in public.
No, that's okay, that's okay.
We haven't seen you for a while.
These are all, gotta keep them on his toes.
Um, so, uh, the only, the only thing I would, I would comment on, this may be kind of out of, out of turn, and I would gladly clarify the, this, um, with some of my planning, uh, friends, but my understanding of the SEQA checklist is that that's, that's, um, that if we were the responsible agency preparing the initial study in-house, then we would probably have a checklist. It's a guiding, it's like a guiding document to help you through the SEQA process. But since we've hired that out, we don't have the checklist. And it may, I believe it becomes part of the, the, uh, initial study itself. So that would answer your question as to why we don't have the checklist.
I think Meaden Hunt, our attorney, has told us that it's beginning, and that you, and that Meaden Hunt just supplied you with it. I don't know, um, Mr. Lance may know more about that, but, um, that's what we, we have been told, and that's why we have been interested in it, to see if all the concerns are there, so that we're, you know, so we, for all of us together, we don't have to go over it.
But everything in the checklist is covered, is covered in the document, in the initial study. So the initial study is, it is a public document.
Well, everything's relevant, the checklist is like.
Okay, well, we're, we're getting off topic here, so let's, good try.
I want to add a quick comment to that. The Meaden Hunt informed us that they would be using the standard SEQA checklist, which is appendix, appendix G in, in the, and that was communicated to you.
Right.
Um, and I confirmed that again with that, with them, as well as with Dusty and our, you know, our, our contract planner. Um, and so that's, that's the response on that.
Do you know what, the, the, appendix G is just a boilerplate thing, and never does everything get checked, I mean, it's not relevant. So what it is, is that you say, is this going to be, you know, a vibration? Is this going to be a, uh, a flooding? You know, those are the things they say we're gonna look at. We're not worried about flooding, this is not a flood, you know what I'm saying?
So anything that is not applicable would, that would be noted there.
But, but we don't know what they are looking at, that's, that's the thing we.
But you get a comment period, that's, that's part of the.
I know, but the comment period.
You get a thirty day, you get thirty days to change your comment.
Might make a corner for you guys, and that's all.
Well, and, and further, I have provided Meaden Hunt all of the written concerns that we have received.
Appreciate it.
Um, and, and, and they, they, they sort of went above and beyond and asked me to relay, which I did to you. If you had any additional ones that hadn't already been conveyed, please do so, so that they could be addressed in the initial study, rather than waiting for the public comment period. Um, so that's been, you know, put out there, and, and then we'll have the public comment period, and any remaining concerns would be addressed at that point.
Okay, moving on. City Council Committee reports, MCOG.
Did not meet in January.
Okay, uh, Laffco?
We met in Adrian's room, that was pretty much the gist of it.
Okay, MTA?
They did not meet in December, they're gonna meet, uh, January twenty-second at Willets.
Okay, MSWA meets next week, League of California Cities.
Did not, I don't know anything about it.
Okay, Water and Waste Water Systems Committee.
Did not meet.
Uh, Revite Ed Committee hasn't met. Finance Committee, sounds like we're having one coming up. Uh, Caltrans Bypass Project Committee has not met. Um, Solid Waste Franchise Agreement, we have, we have met with, um, Solid Waste twice since the last council meeting, and we have, uh, we've narrowed down the points, and we're gonna have, let's see, the, the ad hoc committee met last week to discuss what we had discussed with, uh, Solid Waste, and we're gonna meet again on Friday to further discuss. And then we have another meeting set up with Solid Waste, we're getting close, you know, we're, we're, we're zeroing in on things.
So how will, I haven't been part of negotiating like franchise agreements or things like that. So when will the council be weighing in as part of the negotiations, I guess? Does it get all negotiated?
That's, that's, uh, well, I, I, you know, that's, that's not a bad question. Uh, I mean, actually, I think what's gonna have, have to happen is that we're gonna have to have agreements of some sort with Solid Waste, and then at that point, once we get these things nailed down, I believe then it's time to come back to the council and go over everything. The council will weigh in, will change whatever we need to, and then we'll go back to them and say, you know, make whatever changes.
Is that your understanding?
Right, the ad hoc committee is tasked with, you know, doing the legwork on this and bringing forward, um, a recommendation on that contract. At that point, it's before all five of you, as well as the community, to weigh in and, and then for you to take action.
See, right now, there's a lot of detail stuff, and, um, quite frankly, it would get real cumbersome if we would discuss that here.
Right, and, yeah, I don't want to, and I'm guessing that you guys will probably, you know, I have an interest in seeing, you know, like Compost discuss things like that, and I'm sure you guys know about.
That's there, that, that's, I can say that that's been agreed to.
Right.
Matt?
I, I can't say that it's been agreed to. Um, I think it's one of the points that we're still working with them on, but we did say, um, you know, in, in our first meeting with them, that we wanted to try to come up with either an agreement or a knowledge that we have points of disagreement by mid-February, um, so that if we decide that it's appropriate for us to go out to bid, we, we still have that option, because it takes quite a few months to go through that. So that's why we're, you know, we're really pushing to try to resolve the issues, and then if, you know, whether we have an agreement or several, um, partial agreements, and any, any matters that we can't completely agree on in the ad hoc with, uh, Solid Waste folks, then I think that has to come back to the council before roughly mid-February, if, if we wanna have options of, if there's points that we really feel are policy decisions that we haven't felt completely satisfied by.
Well, actually, the mid, the mid-February was put out there as a incentive. And quite frankly, as, as far as I'm concerned, if we get to mid-February and we're within Nat's eyelash of agreement, I mean, I don't see any reason why we have to go out. But don't anybody tell that to Jerry Ward. Okay.
It's the poor on television.
He's not, yeah, don't tell him. Solar Array Project, uh, we're.
Nat's eye-lash.
We're, um, what are we doing? We're meeting on Friday, there's been, let, let's call it, it's a, it's a dynamic project. It's, it's changing almost pretty regularly, and, and I think we're getting close to some kind of a direction. Um, I mean, obviously, th, th, there's a lot of, there's a lot of details involved with the thing, and primarily, something that would benefit the city, and that's what our marching, what our major, uh, thing is, and I, I, I think we're moving in the right direction, but I, I, I can't go into detail right now because of the.
Dynamic nature.
The dynamics, the, the dynamacity of it. Um, Main Street Improvement.
Has not met.
Has not met. And were there any other committee?
Uh, no.
No, these are all, okay. Uh, we did the council member reports and recommendations, does anybody else have anything besides?
Yeah, I have something else on that one, you go first.
Uh, well, even though we didn't give financial support to EDFC, I still feel that we're, um, a participating member, and I plan to, uh, if they let me, to continue to represent the city, the city of Willets, and there are some pretty interesting things developing, um, some of which are not in the city of Willets, but which, um, serve our regional economy. And, and in particular, one that I'm very interested in is the direct public offering, which will allow non-accredited investors to invest in local entrepreneurial activity, um, as, you know, as social impact investing. So instead of putting your money in some CD or some, um, hedge fund or whatever, wherever, if you have money to invest, and you wanna see that benefit the local economy, the regional economy, um, there will be very soon a mechanism for doing that through Economic Development Finance Corporation, and I'm hoping to have John Curry, the executive director, come and do a whole workshop forum on that kind of subject, probably in March, but as soon as it looks like that's really ripe and ready to go, um, 'cause I know that there are people in our, our community who would like to have that kind of social impact investing. And it also has the possibility of benefiting local entrepreneurs who want to get local funding as well. So it's, it serves both communities, um, the, the investor community and the people that want startup or expanding businesses and need financing. Uh, EDFC is really the investor of last resort when people aren't qualified, uh, to get investment funds or to borrow funds from a bank. Um, banks have very, very stringent criteria, but EDFC is really there to try to stimulate that local economy so they can make what they call higher risk, uh, but they still have various protection to keep, you know, to keep it, to be a sustainable investment. Anyway, I'm really excited about it, and I wanna continue to, uh, to have Willets be informed and involved, and I hope people will come to that.
You're on their board, so I don't think.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, you should talk to them, but I don't think there's anything stopping you from serving on, continuing to serve on their board.
And, and I will let people know when we have this forum scheduled, I'd love to have lots of people there to learn about this.
So when you said that John Curry would be coming up in March, just so I understand, that's to do a forum or to come to the city council meeting?
Um, well, I was thinking of it as a forum, but I would love to actually have as many city council members there as possible, so if that means we have to do a Brown Act compliant, you know, notice.
You can attend, um.
Oh, public, public meetings, okay, um, but I think it's, yeah.
Okay, and, and I'll, I'll contact them tomorrow, I apologize, I think we made a, may have made an incorrect assumption about, given that we're no longer contributing to them, that we wouldn't have a seat on that board.
Yeah, I'm, I'm guessing that they would like to have us there, hoping to get our thing back again. I mean, there, there was a year, I believe, when the county didn't contribute their amount, for whatever reason, and they didn't, you know, they kept them on, and then they came back, so it's not like it's a, a one-time deal.
My thing was almost more of a city manager question, actually, on my recommendation. I was just wondering about goal setting, if we're planning, are you guys thinking about doing a council goal setting?
We are, um, getting through the mid-year budget review and then, um, having that scheduled. We haven't pinned down a schedule yet, because there are some other upcoming scheduling things that might impact that.
Okay, so, I just wanna, I just wanna voice my, um, I think, you know, we had the best of intentions last time, and then we had these massive staff changes, turnover.
Crises.
Budget crises, and, and I really think that, especially with the new staff, for us all to get together, because a lot, a lot of our priorities have changed. I mean, I think our top priority was the railroad avenue connection, which I still believe in, but I would, you know, it's important to hear what the other council members are wanting to move forward.
And staff supports that, we, we, you know, talked about it on several occasions about, um, moving forward with that, and have talked to Bruce about it, and he seems supportive about it, so.
You said that, you mean goals, the goal-setting session?
Yes, yes, it's just really coming down to when can we fit that into the schedule, because I think we would be looking at March, and there might be some other things going on in March that could have an impact.
Yes, that's true, scheduling.
Larry?
Uh, I have several suggestions, and I ran these by Adrian. Um, we're coming to a point where we're going to be, um, have relinquishment on our city streets. And I, the meetings that I've been to, the people south of town, south of Highway twenty want to be included in, to being in Willets. And I noticed at Christmas time that there isn't any Christmas decorations, anything past South Main, Twentieth Street, down to the south to Brown's Corner. I think as a city council, we oughta think about that and see if we can come up with something for that, to put it as a whole city and tell the people at the south end of town that we are including them in and whatever. My next thing, if we're asking people to come to Willets and shop, has anybody walked down Mendocino or Wood Street down to the dark, dark, dark parking lot? The one that's on Wood Street, between that and Mendocino?
There's no lights there.
There's no lights.
Yeah.
There's absolutely no lights even on the street.
Are there lights, or are they just not working?
No lights.
No lights.
Okay.
And if you walk down there in the dark.
Yeah.
You've gotta be real tricky. And so I think that, not saying that it's the city's fault or anything, but these are things that we need to see and we need to do to make it, you know, if I was gonna shop and spend some bucks, of course, at the jewelry store, which is one of the real premier stores in town, we need to have, we need to have some lights for people to go park so that they can come in and spend the money. And I'm sorry, Linda, you don't have to put that in. But anyhow, these are things that, have you people noticed these things?
I haven't noticed, I thought there was lights there.
Well, I know there's no, I, I did a survey of the parking lot for the solar project, and I know that there are no.
There's no lights in the parking lot.
Parking lot, I didn't notice on the street, though.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Anyhow, these are things and the recommendations, and also I went to the swearing-in ceremony for our new supervisor, new supervisor, it was very well done and very well attended, Adrian and I both went to that, thank you.
All right, good, any other council member thingies?
I do, sorry, this isn't, this isn't nothing to discuss.
This is payback, right?
But I, no, but I do really want to make, I would love to get a service group involved in rehabbing the bathroom here in the city park, to be a nice-looking, it looks like a prison jail to me with the, how it is, and I just, I would love to have some other group, 'cause the city doesn't have, you know, um, the time.
Well, you have a rotary program coming up soon.
Uh, to, to take on a, a community rehab of that building, 'cause it is a, it's a public restroom, it's, it's functional, and, you know, our farmer's market's here in the summer, and I just think it could be more welcoming to others.
You have to be able to lock it up at a time, at night, I lived across from that for ten years.
What about putting, what about just putting a peak roof on it that people can't hop on? You know, 'cause then you could do away with a barbed wire, anyway, it's just something that I think about.
It's, you just have to have a time limit, and people that pay attention to who's there and who's tearing up the, the plumbing.
Absolutely, and do you have good and welfare yet?
Well, I have seen, there are some cities that have open-air, um, facilities. It's, it's a three-sided affair, and you kind of go in there, I, I've seen it, you know, probably in France, I guess, but. That might be a way to do it, but, okay.
And I do have good and welfare.
Good and welfare.
Gooden Welfare. Um, the, many of you know that the, um, San Francisco Giants trophies were here last Friday, and that was really fun. I, I was able to go see the two trophies when they came to the Willets Library two years ago, and I just thought that this facility was such a, I thought it worked out much better as far as the crowd and the flow of traffic, and how they set it up, and I was glad that we were able to host. I was happy that the junior giants were able to, you know, um, welcome them here, and it was, it was fun.
I actually saw the, the trophy tour truck driving through town today.
Oh, really? Yes.
Coming from the north, I guess.
They probably went to, like, the county and...
Oh, it was going north, huh. That's strange, I didn't know what they were.
And I had the opportunity to go on vacation, um, over the holiday, uh, to see the Grand Canyon in southern Utah, and it was, it was really nice to get away, but it's always, it's always nice to come home. I mean, we, we live in a pretty special place.
Did you do a Chevy shake, staying at the Grand Canyon?
Did you ride the mules down to the bottom?
No, but I hiked ten miles into Havasu Falls, ten miles one-way, twenty miles round trip.
You guys need to do that while you're young.
Okay, I'm sorry to say that it appears as if we don't have a closed session today.
Woo-hoo! Right, and we, just for everyone's information, we had a special closed session last night, nothing to report on.
Right. And with that...